We're gonna skip off formalities and just do Roca and then go straight to presentations.
Mayor Gerard Donaya.
Present.
Vice Mayor Jesús Roldan. Councilmember Luis Galindo. Councilmember Miguel Vialpando.
Present.
Councilmember Juan Castillo.
Present.
Councilmember Marta González.
Present.
Councilmember Lorena Delgado.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So the first presentations. Mr. Galavies.
Mayor, councilmembers. So I have Armando Leon from HR and Mr. Tom Beaumont, who's our broker. Present the next item. They're both on, I believe, Zoom. So Armando, can you hear me? Tom, are you on the line? Sorry, Mayor, technical difficulties. We, I can't hear you on Zoom. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker and you're presenting, okay? Mayor, we have some technicals, but I'll have him put them on phone. Armando, go ahead.
Okay, can everybody hear me? All right, good. So today we're gonna talk about the health insurance plan. It went, this particular iteration of our benefit plan went through the Health Insurance Committee. So it was vetted through the Health Insurance Committee. And so far as what the content of the benefits would be, as well as any implications to the fees. And today I'm just gonna go over a really high level information. I'm not going to go through every single slide. On page seven, if you go to page seven. Yeah. I think the next one right after that. Or just, just before that, yeah. And. This might be the one, scroll down a little bit, the slide just before this one. And the next one before this one. They're numbered differently. Yeah, they, they should do it. So on this particular slide, this is what our benefit plan will look like. The three plans that we had last year and the year before essentially will carry over. They're the same plans that we've had before under Blue Cross Blue Shield. The MetLife Dental Plan will remain the same. The MetLife Vision Plan will remain the same. And all rates will remain the same. So if you look at the lower third of the screen of the slide, it'll show the rates for, and the participants. So it'll show employee only, employee spouse, employee children, family. And then to the right, you'll see the rates for each individual plan under the column current, and then revised renewal to the far right, those three columns. That shows, that shows that the rates will remain the same. So they're not, and so far as the rates are concerned, there won't be no impact to the budget. The only impact to the budget will be any new FTEs that we add for the next fiscal year that will participate on the health insurance plans. So those will be incrementally added to what we currently have. But the rates themselves will remain the same. I will point out that Transwestern Plan does go up by fifty cents. I, we kind of ran the numbers on that. It's, we have about thirty-seven participants, fifty cents a month. It comes out to about two hundred dollars or so impact for the years, very minimal. So we didn't do any changes to, to the, to that part of the contribution that the employee makes. We just left it as it was before. And we're ready to, we're ready to move forward with the open enrollment. Tom has everything set up and we should be able to go live with our open enrollment later this week, maybe by Friday or early next week. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Go ahead. And, and I was, I was a president on that health committee meeting. And, you know, like, like, like Armando said, we all voted unanimously on it. But something that, that did come up is for the, we were gonna start looking at, at more options earlier in the year. You know, the committee did feel that these options, really, there was only two options that were presented to us. And it was towards the, I mean, with time constraints. So we kind of felt like we really had to make a decision right there and then. But I mean, the, the committee did agree that we were gonna start looking at it. I think they said August or September, so that we can have enough time to look at the options of what's out there. And, and, you know, one of the things, I mean, being that it was very, it was not gonna have a financial impact on it. You know, we, we, I mean, we don't, we, we wanna provide the best possible insurance benefits to our employees without a drastic cost to us, and being that this, there wasn't a big impact. It was very easy for us to, to kind of come to consensus and, and present this to council. So.
Mayor, I have a question, questions?
Yes, Caso, Miguel Pando.
Yeah, in regards to Mr. Castillo's comments, there was time, time, they were up against time. And why was that? If this has been the case in previous years. I know we're paying the same rate. But correct me if I'm wrong, but don't our claims also influence the rates? So did we have any? Were there any less claims this year than in previous years? Because if so, then maybe there should be a, a rate reduction, considering that right now all the rates are going up. But if we're not having that many claims, perhaps this committee could have analyzed things if they were given time to see if the, the rates were adequate or not. That is my, my biggest concern out of, out of this, this whole thing. I mean, if we're gonna move forward with it, then I'm fine moving forward with it. I have no issues with that. But I don't think the, the committee is being given the proper amount of time to analyze and to be able to ask questions.
And, and, and to that councilmember, Vialpando, I think our broker is online, right? We did see a if something was presented to us where I believe larger claims, there weren't many on them. I just can't recall them on top of my head. But if he's online, he can speak to that, to everyone.
See, Councilman Castillo, and that's part of the, part of the problem is that those questions would come up if you guys were, were to meet regularly and you guys were given time as a committee. But like you said, you, you guys were not given a, a time as a committee. You guys have made the best choice with, with the timeframe and the information provided. But I, it's unacceptable that this committee is not allowed sufficient time to be able to ask questions, to ponder the, the options and to actually come up with, with a, with a decision that us as council can just say, okay, they vetted it. They had sufficient time. They went through the whole process. We're good. But no, here we are having discussions on how you guys weren't given a sufficient time by staff.
And, and also just, you know, we did have, I believe, it was only myself and someone else, but we were the only committee members left from the prior committee, you know, if I'm, so that it kind of, we, we kind of started everything, not to say that that's, that, that's an excuse or anything, but that kind of speaks of, you know, the, the changes that has, have occurred within, within our city. You know, but I know we, we did discuss, you know, kind of be more proactive this upcoming year with, with every committee member that was there. So just wanted to say that. I mean, I'm not an excuse or anything, but there was only, I think, two of us remaining from a group of like six or seven.
And, and I appreciate all your guys' efforts, Councilman Castillo, believe me. It, it, something like that, it takes, it takes up a lot, lot of time and it's a, you have to put a lot of effort into it. But again, you know, I'm disappointed in the fact that they did not allow you enough time to be able to ask, ask questions. And also it's, it's disappointing knowing that there was only two of you that were coming back from previous that they didn't allow for time. I mean, we, we go through this whole thing every single year where they do not allow enough time. It's not the first time that this has happened. And that is where it's frustrating and disappointing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Miguel, I do understand your concerns. One of the biggest things this year would have been that we would have had to go out and bid for a new contract, which was a timely process. And then again, you are correct, we didn't really plan. It was a planning thing. But we'll be more proactive in the upcoming years and try to do better.
Is, is this Rosa?
Yes.
I appreciate it, Rosa, but quite honestly, you know, this is a HR. I wish I could have heard that from, from, from HR. You know, HR always takes the lead in this. I appreciate you trying to, trying to accept responsibility for it, but quite honestly, I kind of preferred. Yes, but I understand that, Rosa, but the lead is done by HR.
If I'm, if I may, yeah, I was, I'm having a little bit of audio problem, but I did, I did hear the comment about us being better prepared and I appreciate your input. And certainly we'll take that into consideration. I'm not gonna make any excuses. It has been a challenging year. And it, the health insurance plans were not necessarily in the radar early on. And we didn't necessarily get all the information that we needed as far as the, the claims data and so forth. That, that was not available early on and those were critical components in order to come up with the plans and the proposals. So all of that was delayed. Again, not making any excuses, it's just the way things worked out. Yeah, I wish we could have done a little bit more lead time and given you more ample time to, to review plans, ask questions and so forth. And we will try to do better next time.
Mayor, for me. Councilman Vialpando, that's why, you know, I've directed them to start in August. We want to make sure that the committee has plenty of options and opportunities to review. I, I myself had a conversation with Councilman Castillo about different opportunities and and that's something we're definitely gonna look at for next year and, and make sure the committee prepares and has this all ready way before we, we get to this part.
And also the open enrollment, it's just too late in the game. We're already, ready to approve a budget and we still have the open enrollment. So we can work on a calendar and make sure that, that we have all this.
Definitely, and, and I just wanted to mention that we, we had, we were speaking to Tom and some of the things that were, because it's they were trying to get records of our past, we just started with this broker. So that was another challenge from the broker that we had. But again, we're gonna look at other options and making sure that we get the best available service for the city. So.
Previous years was for cost containment. And we've achieved that over the last three years and not had any huge incremental increases like we experienced about three or four years ago. So in that respect, I think, I think we've met the objectives. And, but I, I do agree with Mr. Vialpando, we still need to do our due diligence and and make sure that we're looking at other options and have enough time to, to do proper analysis.
We're gonna start analyzing for next fiscal year, three months, right?
That's a. Yes, we, we have the means, because for a blue box. Right, yeah, because I mean, we, our committee, we discussed deductibles and everything and, and, and that, I mean, that was, that was one of the things that, that we will, I mean, I mean, we want to see we can get a lower deductible thing. I mean, those are little details that if we start discussing them in August, it'll give us ample time to have those healthy discussions and then compromise and come, come to an agreement as a whole. No action is required here, right? Because it's just a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The next report to present to you, it's a breakdown of the ARPA-funded projects. It took us some, going back to some of the videos of the previous council meetings to put this together. So this is what we have right now. As soon as it's finished moving. Thank you, Andrea. So the, the first ten items, those are the, the list of we found in CIPs and the budget for fiscal year twenty-three. We have some of the projects that are already finalized, paid for, and some of these projects, as you can see on the right column, they're still ongoing and they're moving to be finalized in fiscal year twenty-four. We have some small projects, some large projects, but these are all ARPA-funded. The South Somerton Drainage Project is, has been finalized, the premium pay for employees has been finalized. The core security system is, it's ongoing. Judge Torock is working with her team on that one. Community center expansion and right away, this is ongoing, is moving some of the, I don't think the expenses are gonna happen, any expenses are gonna happen in fiscal year twenty-three, but it's rather rolling over to fiscal year twenty-four.
Carmen. Mayor, if I may, just on the community center expansion, the right away, and it closes the pond. We actually had a kickoff meeting with Last and J2 today on, on getting ready to present to council. We hope June, I believe, is the twentieth. And so that we can, you can give us direction and they can actually present the project and from the beginning and, and have council input.
Item number five is the water tank number three. That is going to be finalized in fiscal year twenty-four as well. Number six is the big garage at Police Department. Chief Juarez is working on that and it's rolling over to fiscal year twenty-four. Number seven, it's, has been finalized, is the network system for City Hall. Number eight is the HVAC system for the community center, the AC, has been finalized as well. The number nine is the phone system. It, it was finalized. Now what we have to do is, there's a nine thousand dollar annual fee that we need to budget from, for the years that we have this phone system. Number ten, the cameras for the impound lot at Police Department, it's also ongoing. Moving, rolling over to fiscal year twenty-four. These ten projects have a total of four point eight million dollars. We have the additional projects that were presented to council, they were approved, and at the time they were paid for with contingency. They were charged to contingency. These also, if approved by, actually the motions were to use ARPA funds to reimburse the contingency funds in the general plan, the general fund. The items there, the projects there is the parking lot, the land acquisition right by the community center. The APS connection at the high school lift station. And the Cocopa Golf Course assistance.
Those were specific motions to use our funds for those three projects?
They were, like I said, I had to go through several videos of meeting, council meeting agendas. And they were directions, and that's the reason why I have it as additional projects. Meaning that they're still funded originally through contingency funds. And if that, that was, it's unclear as to where there was a motion or just a direction. That's why I kind of separated them. And if the cases and there is the consensus of council that these are going to be paid by ARPA, then we can utilize those funds to reimburse the contingency general fund. If not, then those funds are still available.
One thing that Mr. Galavies mentioned was a community center included the pond, but maybe now, but last, last year the pond was a separate project. Because this, this, this was supposed to be on the, on the main street side. And then during this fiscal year it changed, so the pond was never part of this, of this project. So now it is, but we need to find additional funding for that, too.
And Mayor, I wanna, looking over it, it was one point seven for the actual shelter. And there was an additional seven hundred thousand for the pond. So we just got that clarified and I just wanted to make sure, I could clarify that you're correct, it is separate. We, as Carmen mentioned, we went through minutes and trying to make sure that what was approved and, and or directed, we wanted to bring this to you just for clarification and, and so if you had any questions.
Yeah, so the pond needs to be shown here as a separate. At least funding wise, because that whole funding was for the, the expansion.
Right, Mayor, and, and that's why the community center expansion, the one point seven, that doesn't include the pond. That's just the community center. The pond is actually on the general fund side.
Okay.
Mayor, I can speak as to the golf course assistance. That one was approved through ARPA funding due to the fact that we could assist a small business such, which is the golf course and also the tribal assistance. So that one was allocated to ARPA, at least last year that I know of.
And then Mayor, if I may, the APS connection lift station. We had brought that to council. We, we had done the premium pay and so we were able to have an additional funds available and requested that, that could be used for this in a meeting. So just, just to clarify.
So the summary that you see below is the, the total funds of ARPA in the five point, it's a five million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine. If we add all the, the projects listed, the ten above and the, the three additional projects, we have a five point four total projects, which still leave us a balance of a hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine. Considering that we are using the ARPA for, for these thirteen projects, or if we are separating the, or adding the, the pond amount, so we still have a hundred and twenty thousand, two, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
I have a question on the water tank. Is that identified in the IIP for, for development fees? So can we, as we obtain development fees for water, can we, can we transfer them into for the, for those two million dollars?
I can get you that information, Mayor. I don't have it top of my head, but I can review the IIP and my guess is that it is part of the IIP for, for water impact fees, but let me double check the IIP and, and properly answer to your question.
Thank you for your hard work. I know it's just try to find what projects were allocated to. It was a lot.
Any other question?
Mayor, if I may. So we do have that balance of one twenty, two sixty-nine. Staff recommendation, and again, this is just a recommendation, as you see at the bottom there, is the community center expansion. That money could go there just because of costs and things that are going up. But again, we leave that up to Mayor and Council, what direction you want to give us on that.
See, that, that area could go to the pond if it goes to that.
And according to the statute, we have until year twenty twenty-six to spend this money, so we still have time for, for, for your direction and, and your decision. Thank you.
Just to clarify, Mayor, the direction is go with the recommendation or, okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
I actually need, need a little bit of time to ponder whether we're gonna go that route. For example, the, the cost to the connect the electricity to the lift station. Why is that cost associated to this ARPA funding versus the, the cost of, of those that are gonna connect to that lift station? That's why a long time ago, I always urge that we create a benefit area. So those costs would be directly absorbed by those that are developing. And now here we are subsidizing a lift station that developers aren't gonna get charged for whatever the amount was for, for that particular connection.
That, that item, Councilman, was finalized last, well, this fiscal year, it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand and is like Mr. Galavies explained, they, they were able to justify in the in that those additional funds needed was, that there was money left over from, from the premium pay. And that's, that's, that's why it appears here, but because it was taken out of the contingency, is that correct? Or that's why it's here? So we could stay in the contingency or, or.
If ARPA funding is moved, moved around and covers that, that amount, then we're not able to, to absorb that cost through, through the, through the, the impacts, just like on the water tanks. I know it's only thirty-five thousand dollars, but.
It's a hundred and thirty-five.
Well, a hundred and thirty-five.
Yeah, and the reason I asked if there was a motion by council was because understanding is that council did approve it to come out of the ARPA funds a couple of months ago. So this is just showing what.
I remember. I remember it being brought to council, but quite honestly, I didn't recall.
Yeah, I didn't recall where the funding came from, but.
Yeah, same here.
I did a presentation myself, Mayor, and the recommendation, the motion was to approve to utilize contingency funds at a time and then reimburse with ARPA funds.
So again, yeah, give us a thought that we could discuss, and if we want to bring it back, we could.
And Mayor, just, just to clarify, if that's the case, and we'd like to do that in this fiscal year, if possible, that way that it would impact next year's budget. So if you'd like, direction-wise, I can bring this back up on the.
Not necessarily bring it back, discuss it, discuss it with the finance director and whatever makes your sleep better. And then we could discuss it with Vialpando. If he still wants to bring it back, then. And then we can discuss it with Yapando, if he still wants to bring it back, then we can, but at least for me, I would follow the finance director's direction, at least for this item, since it was approved by council, but make, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
No, if it was approved that way, I'm, I'm okay with it, I mean, it's, it's, I guess it's a foregone conclusion, you know, it's already been handled, done. But I was just, I'm just cautious and wary about using all the ARPA funding for all, all these projects, because some of them are relatively new to me. You guys might have discussed them on a, on a date or time when I wasn't there, but but no, it's, if everybody's okay with it, then proceed.
So Mayor, Council, we'll, we'll go with the public safety compression, oh, I'm sorry, special events.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Angelica Roldan, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here to present, we also have Brisa, Special Events Coordinator. She's here, if there's any questions, we're presenting our special events for this new fiscal year. Special events are vital to local communities to build a sense of unity, improve citizen-to-government relations, share common interests, and to just kick back and have fun together. So we're gonna start with our 4th of July celebration, what it was allocated. This current fiscal year was 50,000, $50,000 and we are requesting the same amount, 50,000. We're having our, also our UTV block party. This brings a lot of, this event brings a lot of visitors, a lot of off-road enthusiasts. And I know it's been a really good event this, every year. So we're, we're requesting the same amount that was allocated is $40,000. We have lighting of Centennial. It's an event that the whole community gets together. Very, very good event for, for the, the children and the families here in Summerton. It was allocated 4,000 and now we're requesting 6,000. We have our live parade. It's also a very good event that the whole community gets together, is the kickoff of our Tamale Festival. We requested last year 3,500. Obviously, our traffic control fees are getting a little bit higher, so we're requesting 4,500 this year. One of my favorite events is Pet Palooza. It was allocated 4,500 this current year. Now we're requesting for our next fiscal year is only 5,000. Summerton Food Festival is part of our Summerton Greater Days festivities. We allocated $40,000 last year and we're allocating the same amount this year. We have our Battle of the Chaladas, we just had this event back in May. It was allocated 35,000 and this fiscal year, we're proposing 40,000. The reason why, we noticed there's a lot of, a lot of different visitors from different, different areas. We noticed that, I remember Mayor and Council mentioned that at our last meeting. And we're also trying to improve our event and it's one of our unique events that we have here in the community, so it has a lot of potential. Now we're talking about our new events, we, this is the first year after 2020, I believe, having our Greater Days Parade. We're requesting 6,000 and that will cover a part of traffic control as well as some of the awards fees that we need to cover the event. Another new event that we're, we would like to add for this new fiscal year is our festival. Summerton is proud to celebrate art because we believe in beauty and communicating through artistic expression. We live in, we believe in our local arts community and encourage their dedication. We're asking for this event, 6,000. And we just want to mention something that we're currently doing, working on our potential funding is it's also getting more sponsorship, more businesses involved, a lot of agencies that would like to be part of our special events. So we created different packages, sponsorship information that is being sent to different businesses, local businesses, and also from Yuma County. And we noticed an increase on this, so that's one of our goals for special events in Parks and Recreation is to get more funding. So this is just an example of how our sponsorship levels and, and package looks like, and we also added a commitment form. So the total amount that was allocated the last fiscal year was 177,000. And we are, for this new fiscal year, we're asking for, total will be 197,500.
And Mayor, just to call, just to clarify, this wouldn't include the sponsorships? This is just what they're, they're requesting.
Thank you, Kelly, good, I think this is the third time I've seen this presentation and the main question was sponsorship versus what was general fund, and then that was, I think I memorized this presentation already.
Any questions?
Yeah, and you know, my comment, and it has been in the other presentations, that 177 last year was allocated, that was with sponsorship and with general fund. And at, at least, and that's what I wanted to get clarified, and it seems now that, well, we had allocated for both general fund and, and and fundraising, now it's become general fund plus additional fundraising, so with this funding, we should have that
Mayor.
Little size events now.
Mayor, if I may, we, we, last year, when it included the sponsorship, it was, I believe, 220. And that was what was budgeted. Not, not, when I say budget, it was in the budget, but it all depend on if the sponsorship money came in. So the 177 was really what was, in a sense, approved. And the other portion, this year, we've separated that. This is, the 177 is what was actually approved as expenditures, budgeted expenditures. But again, you know, we're gonna have a challenging year and, you know, I've, I've spoken with the Parks and Rec Director and we understand that that, you know, that might not be possible, that they might have to rely a little bit more on sponsorships. It, it just depends on the budget.
Events have been great this year.
Mayor, Council, if, if I may approach you guys?
Mayor, while Brisa is handing out some information, I do have, I do share kind of your, your, your concern in regards to when we adopt the budget, they would have to present the whole amount for each, for each event, because if they only budget for 177 and they do spend the 200 plus that Mr. Galaviz was talking about, then they're gonna have to cut from another line item because they'll be over, over budget.
So if, if I'm Mayor, Mayor and Council, Brisa Garcia, events. I am showing you the numbers for this year. Our budget was 177,000 with sponsorship and everything that came in. We only spent 1,554,668. But we did have sponsorship of 26,250. So in total, with, with the team and the hard work, in reality, we spent 115,594. The budget that we are requesting now doesn't mean necessarily that we're gonna use it, our goal is to get sponsorship. But due to the inflation, we just want that extra cushion, but if you could see in the numbers in front of you, we did really good and, and did not spend what Mayor and Council had approved for this last fiscal year.
That's all I wanted this last two times.
But you, but you have it now, Mayor, you have it now, but if you, we were ready.
Third time's the charm.
Put too much information, we talked to Louis about, we were not sure what to add on the presentation, but we came ready with this breakdown.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you know, you're saying that you approved the 177,000, but you didn't use it. So does that mean that special events has the leeway of saying, okay, well, we didn't spend the 4,500 in Pet Palooza, so that, let's say they only spent 2,000, they can move those 2,000 to 4th of July. So do they have that wiggle room opportunity to be moving that, those amounts?
They do, because it's for special events, unless directed, that, that is where it stays. But usually, on a line item, you have that flexibility because it's budgeted for the whole year. Again, it's, it's great that, that, you know, if they're not spending it at all, it helps the budget. But that would be something that is possible, yes.
And the reason I'm asking is probably for 4th of July, the fireworks, you know, I think Brisa or, or somebody had mentioned that the cost had skyrocketed, so I just want to make sure that, you know, that they have the opportunity to be moving those funds wherever they need it, not necessarily just for that event, and too bad, you, you know, for 4th of July, let's say they were only approved 50,000, but in reality, it's gonna cost 60, but I didn't spend it. In the other events, am I able to move that money?
And Councilwoman, the only concern is 4th of July is our first event of the year. So that would be really difficult because you still have all the other events. So if 4th of July fell the last event, then I would say, yeah, you could do that. But 4th of July is our first event of the year, even in the, all the other events. You know, it's not a good practice, you're allocated a certain amount, that's why it's budgeted. And, and so we, we try to stay in within that budget.
I, I have only just one, one question, just, so I, I see that for, for this upcoming fiscal year, we're looking at a 197,500, right? That would be, that's what we have to put on the budget line to make sure that our, our Isar dotted and Tees are crossed. But with this paper that you gave us, we have a balance of 61,405.39 that we got back from revenue that we, I guess they're there, so is this 61,405 in addition to the 197? Or is, or is the 61 already included?
The 61,000 that you see is what we made with vendor spots, with sponsorship, beer money. So it's the revenue that came in.
Which, does that go back to, to the events?
Yeah, no, Councilman Castillo, what's budgeted is what it's used. Revenue that comes into the city, that goes to the general fund, that is revenue that's budgeted to cover what you see in the budgeted line items. It's, it's not, the only difference, and I think Rosa might be able to help me on the sponsorships that Councilman Yapando had, had asked, is I believe it's a revenue account, Rosa?
So it just goes to a different bucket?
Right, it's specifically for that event, you can't use it for, you know, if they tell you 4th of July, then you use it for 4th of July.
There's different revenue accounts, the sponsorships typically are restricted. You can usually just use them for that general purpose because that party intends on sponsoring that specific event and they want it used for that specific purpose. So all of the revenues, it's very minimal from special events will get tossed into a bucket into general fund. This bucket gets used for everything in the city. And it kind of does, in a, in a sense, offset this cost as Councilmember Castillo had mentioned. If that answers your question.
Rosa, Councilman Yapando asked, let's say they, you know, they spent 50,000 and they got 20,000 sponsorships. How does that work in the budget, showing in the budget, the different accounts?
So you would budget for 70,000 total in revenue, 20,000 in your specific revenue category that's for sponsorships? And then the other 50,000 would be in a general fund pot?
And Councilman Yapando, just to let you know, there is a, a line item that we have budgeted for that, and I believe it was like 90,000. So, so it's in a different account, but it's, it's still towards special events, but it's in another line item, if, I, I think that answers your question.
Yes, so, so realistically, they, you're looking at about 280. Am I reading that right or no?
No, I, I'm just, that would be for total, total revenues from the Parks and Rec fees. It, it all gets combined, I'm sorry, it doesn't specify. The sponsorships, like Rosa mentioned, was specific to that event, so they can only use it. But that's, that's in a whole, that's another line, revenue line that all those revenues from Parks and Rec come into and, you know, that's from the, the vendors. You know, just the different things that come in for, for that registration, swimming lessons, rentals, all that.
Yeah, and it's, and it's 60,000, what they're raising from sponsors for special events, that's pretty good. If they're able to match it, even if they maximize the 197, then you, we're really looking at a cost to the city of 130, 37. So, so it's a, it's, it's, I think that's pretty good.
Yeah, and I feel most of our events have been going on for several years. People know and they want to be involved, then I think we can, you know, maximize that and, and because people want to come and they want to advertise because they know that Summerton events are, are always well attended, so but I think we should, you know, we can concentrate on that because, yeah, people, people are there, you know, Louis, you're used to fundraise yourself for all these events, so people very interested in participating.
Mayor, and if I may, just to add, it was already mentioned on our presentation, we're adding those two new events, so that's why the numbers look a little bit more, you know, higher, but that's one of the, of the ideas is to, to bring new events, improve our events, entertainment, and bring better events for the quality of life of our residents. Any more questions?
More questions, comments? This is the last, the, the, the last special events presentation of fiscal.
This is it, Mayor, we, we got you this paper and that's what we wanted. Mayor, just to end, end this one is, again, you know, and admin's recommendation is that, you know, we look at the budget and then, you know, provide this information to what, what we think might be able to. But again, as we go into the budget, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about it.
Thank you.
So we have the presentation for the police analysis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, we're proposing to increase wages for the public safety uniform staff. This excludes any support staff such as dispatch, admin. Over all the impact on the budget's gonna be around, can you guys go to my next slide, please? It's gonna be approximately 1.6% in the police department, I believe, and this includes wages and overtime. And it's only gonna increase our personnel budget in police by 68,559. Does anybody have any questions in regards to police?
That's for the whole department or just those positions that you presented?
Specifically the uniform staff, this would be like a, a police officer on the field, a chief, can you go to my previous slide, Andrea?
So just so. I'm sorry, just so Mayor and Council understand, this will be with adjusting the, the base salary and compression?
It'll be for the patrolmen, the sergeant, the lieutenant captain and the chief. It'll be for the patrolmen, the sergeant, the lieutenant captain, and the chief of police.
I have a question, just, just for clarification, I guess on my end, when I, when I'm looking at these numbers right here, it says the patrolmen, they get twenty two dollars and twenty two cents an hour. Of the new proposed is twenty four dollars and ninety six cents, is that a one point one two percent increase?
Yes, these are averages, they're not really actuals. So I kind of just took the actuals and then I averaged it out depending on the, the data. So there were people on the police force that were being paid extremely low amounts. And they got bigger increases than people that were already closer to the twenty four. And that kind of offset the higher paid people, which got a little bit less of an increase. And the increases were based on years of service, I believe it was two percent per year of service. And then we had a special case where there's a detective, there's a an officer that, a patrol officer that has a special assignment as a detective. Now he got a little bit more of a bump because of his special assignment.
Okay, so it's, okay, I just, when I looked at it, I, I, it kind of confused me because I'm like, it's not one point one two percent. I mean, but it's the average within the department.
Yes.
That's, okay.
Absolutely, I know it seems very low. I agree with you because I was kind of shocked too.
It was only like twenty four cents more.
Yes. Completely agree. Any more questions in regards to police? Alrighty, let's move on to fire. Okay, so fire, we have some more changes. We have the captains, for example, the fir, Captain one is increasing to twenty five dollars and forty four cents. Captain two is also increasing to twenty five dollars and forty four cents. And maybe similar based on their years of service in that position. And the fire chief is staying the same. Then we have the engineers over to your right. They're getting a little more of an increase. Then a little, at the bottom, you have the fire inspector, the firefighter EMT, which is getting kind of a huge jump. They're going from fourteen fifty five to seventeen eighty two, and this is just an average, it's not like a starting or standard amount. The firefighter paramedic, the average proposed rate is pretty high, possibly because they had a couple of staff members that have been there for a very long time. So it would have hiked their wages pretty, a lot higher than some of the ones that haven't been there so long. If you could go to my next slide, please. Overall, it is a one point sixteen increase to salaries and wages. And FY twenty two for fire. Then I have some additional information. The new base pay for firefighter EMT is gonna go from fourteen fifty five to sixteen fifty. The firefighter paramedic is going to go from sixteen eighty six to nineteen twenty five. The fire engineer is currently starting at seventeen seventy two and will be increasing to twenty dollars and fourteen cents an hour. The fire captain is going from nineteen dollars and eight cents to twenty one point twenty cents. Fire inspector, there won't be, I believe, an increase. Oh no, there is an increase for our fire inspector, it's going from twenty eight nineteen to thirty three eighty three. And that's all I have, any thoughts, comments, questions?
And Mayor, if I may, so I think if I can have the chief talk a little bit about, you know, how, how these wages, believe it or not, this is being competitive, but still, the other communities have a higher wage. But we feel that this is competitive, we feel that it will retain our current employees in the public safety sector and, and, and be able to recruit also. Chief, if you want to add a little bit to it.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, there was a, there was a change on the fire inspector, new salary would be twenty seven forty six. And for the battalion chief, thirty four sixty one, which Rosa didn't have. And from that, yes, the way we came up with the salaries was as close as we could possible to the city of San Luis. Even though in the last eight years, we've lost thirteen personnel to the Yuma Fire Department. But we lost five personnel to the city of San Luis Fire Department. And then we lost seven personnel to other agencies, which would be one in the Phoenix area and a couple others that MCA is, YPG. And some of those decided just not to be in the fire service. So the salaries that we came up with was to be as close as possible to San Luis. We understand that Yuma is going to be bigger salaries and I worked with Armando, Rosa and Carmen and Louis, and this is the numbers that we're proposing to at least be able to keep more people employed here with the city of Somerton. Oh, and also with the IGA that we have with the Cocoa Pie Indian Trap, we're also working with them. And a portion of the salaries that they're paying for it, so.
Mayor, if I may, I, I didn't get a chance when we were doing the PD to have the chief, what if she had anything she wanted to comment?
Any questions for the? No, thank you.
Mayor and Council, good evening. I think the fire chief just pretty much summed up what I, if I've had anything to say. The city of San Luis is proposing that they'll start the officers at twenty seven dollars per hour. Our base play that I work with Rosa was twenty four dollars an hour. And then we've selected the staff that had the longest period of time. That had shown a loyalty to the city and they have worked, some of them over fifteen, twenty, twenty six years with the city. So those are some of the staff that we worked on to tackle that compression, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I believe, chief, you said how many they were looking for in Yuma to replace, was it forty? Forty officers? So they're going to be looking for forty new officers. So I think it's important that, you know, those have been here with the city that we'd be competitive to a certain degree, you know, as budget allows.
Any additional questions or comments?
Any questions or comments?
Thoughts on this approach?
So it's literally only a one point one six increase in next year's budget, right? With, with all these, I mean, it kind of looks a lot of increases and everything, but it's literally just a one point one six impact.
Absolutely, a lot of the officers were under market rate to begin with, and that's what kind of caused it to be so minimal.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Councilman Vialpando.
Rosa, what was a, what was a formula again that was used for, for, for this to determine, determine or to tackle compression?
So I had collaborated with human resources, human resources prepared a study. He kind of went through what each officer was being paid, how long they were in their position. He determined that for every year of service that they had in their position, they were going to get two percent increase. So if you were in your position for, say, six years, you would get two percent each year, which would be a twelve percent increase. Now, that special case where the one officer was a detective and he only did that as a special assignment temporarily, he was given a little bit more of an increase than for lieutenants and sergeants. And I believe captains and chief of police, we determined that if we were to increase the wages of the patrolmen, they would be pretty, getting pretty close to some of the wages of the sergeants, the lieutenants, and the captains. So that would make sense in trying to adjust them as well, kind of so that our structure would be in place.
Okay, so this same method was used for, for other departments as well, correct?
This is the only, public safety is the only department, I believe, that we fully address compression in. We address compression in other departments, but very minimally. One example would be the prep cook and parks department. I believe. It was the prep cook and then the maintenance worker where they had been there for quite a few years and they were getting pretty close to the minimum wage. Keep in mind that minimum wage does increase to approximately fifteen dollars by twenty twenty six. So we'll need to make some adjustments in the future.
Okay, so, quick question, who made a determination that only those departments would receive that?
This was a direction given to me by the city manager and the human resources department. They were instructed to conduct the study and determine which employees specifically had really bad compression where it absolutely needed to be addressed. The direction given to me for the remainder of the employees was to propose a three percent cola in the upcoming year.
Okay, thanks.
Alrighty, any more questions?
Other questions or comments?
So, Mayor and Council, we're heading to the fun one.
Absolutely.
The budget, so, oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
So we're done with item one, we're going to
Yes, a new business? Yes, we're going to a new business, yes. Rosa?
Mayor and Council, we prepared a draft budget for you, it's not finalized yet. We are currently in a deficit and evaluating the priorities of the different departments. We're doing quite a few pricey CIP items that are putting a hole in our budget where we won't see the, the return of revenue until later on in the future. One of them happens to be the, the Parkview project. Andrea, can you scroll down for me, please? Keep going. Let's stop right there. Our revenue that we're budgeting for next year is around eighteen million, that is a six, a six million dollar increase from prior year. General fund is a mixture of different departments, different revenue sources that are unrestricted. Ready, so scroll down for Mayor and Council, please. For Mayor and Council, previously, it was three hundred seven thousand eight hundred that we spent in prior year. Currently, we're proposing to spend two eighty two, six twenty six. Scroll down for me, next is admin. Admin, we're also decreasing our budget, previously, we had spent, we had budgeted six hundred eighty seven thousand five hundred forty three seven oh two is what we are aiming to spend this year. This again includes our three percent cola, these figures right here. Moving on to courts. Courts, we're seeing a little bit of an increase, not much, a thousand dollar in, increase from thousand six hundred, is that a thousand? A thousand six hundred seventy, seventy five, we're seeing in comparison to prior year. Keep going, police department, this include, includes the compression. This year, it's four million one eighty three six six nine in comparison to the three point four million in prior year. It's a little bit of a jump. And a bulk of it has to do with the, the compression of some additional projects that the police department has taken on. Keep scrolling, please, to fire and ambulance. So fire, we're ju, we're jumping a little bit higher, going from about two point eight to three point two this year. Scroll for me in Parks and Recs, please.
Rosa, if you can hold on for a second, Mayor and Council, I know we're kind of going through this quite quick, but if any questions, please let Rosa know about.
Absolutely, slow me down. Parks and Recs, we are jumping from, we're actually doing savings in Parks and Recs, we're going from one point seven to one point five. Next is community and development. Now, community and development, it's increasing a little bit specifically because we're taking on more projects that we're planning for. Our professional services, I believe, had a bit of an increase.
And Rosa, if you know, hold on for a second there, Mayor and Council, on community development, one of the increases is the potential of reviewing certain structures that might be coming in for next year. We have, so if you correctly refer on, I think we have the community center, I mean, I'm sorry, the Sunset Clinic, possibly Fourth Avenue Gym, and some other projects that review wise are, I'd say, average about thirty, forty thousand. So, so that's, that's what we're projecting to prepare for that with the Parkview development. And, and also maybe some Paraconi area, there might be some other commercial development also that will be, need, need to be reviewed, just wanted to point that out. I don't know if you have any questions?
I have a question, on these line items, like the computer software and support, you went from eighteen thousand to thirty thousand. And then what you're saying now, Louis, is this a huge difference of three thousand to sixty eight thousand dollars?
So this is a computer and software, software and support specifically?
The other services?
Well, first is my computer software and support question, it went from eight, it was eighteen and it went to thirty thousand.
If you want to come up, please.
And then other services, it was three thousand and now it's sixty eight thousand. Why so much? That's a huge difference.
So I'll start with the Mayor and Council, I will start with the computer services question. Right now, this covers, this line item covers our software for plan review, we use a software called Asella. It covers for permitting, plan review, archiving, has a lot of features. We're, we are currently licensed to use Asella. However, we're finding it increasingly difficult to manage Asella. And we are proposing to transition to the iWork platform, which is what the Public Works Department uses. And that would require a twelve thousand dollar one-time fee for iWork. And I'm sorry, you know, not, not one time, but I think it's, that would be the cost annually. But there are some benefits to iWork that Asella does not have, such as unlimited licenses. Asella charges per user, iWork is unlimited. So there's a lot more flexibility, it's a lot more modern, more user friendly. However, we can't just stop using Asella and fully transition to iWork overnight. It's going to take some time, there will be some time that we'll need to migrate all the data. So for this next year, we are going to need to have both Asella and iWork in order to transfer everything over and fully transition over to iWork with, probably for the next fiscal year. So that's the computer support item, and then the second one that you asked about was the
Other services.
Other services.
I want to say that was the outsourcing.
Yes, so this, this one here would be, for example, to contract a commercial inspection, for example, for a, a, a large commercial project. Sometimes our inspector is unable to do those because of the high level of expertise required, so we have to contract. We have a lot of development coming. And then also for professional services, which is engineering review. But I thought that this one, I don't know if it was three thousand last year, I could have sworn this was about the same.
And we can look at that, and, and we'll have, check Rosa review that one more time. Just, I want to point out that we're actually, Rosa. Just, I want to point out that we're actually, Rosa, because she's short, she's actually has three hats right now she's wearing. And so we've also had our accounting people group been working together. So that's why it's proposed, that might be something that we will review. So if Rosa, if you can jot that, make sure, and and mayor council, I just want to let you know, these are, these are proposed amounts, you know, and and so the bottom line might be that, that might not happen. But that's, just wanted to bring that to your attention and and gets, you know, if there's any certain direction you'd like us to go in and look at, we can always do that.
Louis, I haven't checked my email, was this email to council prior or? It has, has it?
Mayor, we just, we just got this, we, we've been working back and forth and trying to get this to you as soon as possible. And just to let you know, it's, and I, and I think I've shared this with council, it's been very challenging. Revenue sources and expenditures. We, just to let you know, we, we received a revenue source yesterday, which is a, was a good amount that we didn't know that was coming in, so we're very, we are concerned, and and this is something Rosa and Carmen and I have been talking about, is that we wanted to get you the latest numbers we could because we didn't want to send something and then the next day is totally different. And and that was our concern is, is trying to go back or backpedal with you, trying to give you correct numbers. But again, it's been very challenging, and we're, so we're, 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 we're just continue to work all day long on this and and trying to get those correct numbers to you and and making sure that we balance the budget, but with, with your input and direction.
Mayor, I have a quick comment. Or a question, so, so would, correct me if I'm wrong, but on these other, other other services, a lot of them are paid by by the, the individuals that are building those, those projects, correct? There is a charge to them, you just have to budget the expense for it.
Councilman Rui, that is, that is correct, the costs are, in a sense, reimbursed to the city via the building permit or whatever fee that is required for the project, but the city does have to bear the upfront cost.
Yes. Okay, so regardless if they're sixty thousand dollars, more likely we're going to recoup sixty thousand dollars.
Correct.
That's all I had, mayor, thanks.
Any further questions from mayor and council? Thank you.
Not now, wait till we get the left.
Continue. Ready, continuing on to finance. So finance, finance, we're increasing quite a few dollars here, and that's because we're bringing the accountant on board. And we have been contracting an outside CPA agency to help us with some projects, and that's been pretty costly. Keep scrolling, city clerk. For the city clerk's office, there'll be some savings here, we're going from one seventeen to seventy six thousand. Animal control. Animal control has a tiny bit of an increase, it's around like a ten thousand dollar increase there. It's going from two fifty six to two sixty three. Economic and development.
Rosa, if you can hold on for a second and go back, I just wanted to point out in animal control, there's a capital outlay, seventy thousand. Those have been rolled over for the vehicles that that were not ready last year or this year. And we're hoping to get them this next fiscal year, and unfortunately, they're getting rolled over, they've been ordered. And I believe the chief mentioned sometime in October, November, I'm sorry, of this year. So that's, there's a little bit of increase there, that's why also.
Is that for the increase in price of the vehicle?
No, no, that was just for the vehicles that have been ordered, that we just have to keep rolling over because of back order, delay, shipping and, and putting them together.
I'm just trying to avoid what would happen with a PD.
I, I agree, we're trying to do the same thing, thank you.
Alrighty, economic and development. Currently, they don't have a, a director, our expenses are going up quite a few. Quite a few dollars here.
Mayor council, there is some big ticket items that we will be reviewing. And just the, the requests for certain amounts because of the new development and and things that are coming to the city. But this is something that we'll definitely be reviewing a little bit closer. We, you know, definitely want to be prepared for economic development, but at the same time, looking at budget and needs and wants.
It's resulting from the, the Parkview. Human resources. Don't believe there's too much of a change there, it's very minimal, it's around thirty thousand, it's going from one twenty two to one sixty seven. Information technology.
What was, excuse me, mayor?
Yes.
What, what was the biggest ticket item for increase on HR?
That is, that would be the salaries. And the wages. I believe Armando is hiring an additional, is looking to hire an additional FTE. Any other comments or questions on HR?
And if I may, mayor, we're actually looking at that because one of the things that we, we had that we're looking at with FTEs is how they're getting split up and how they were getting allocated. So, so there might be some changes because they might have been half in finance and in HR, so we're, we're trying to clean up where it's a little bit more defined, just to let you know.
Alright, information technology, there's a change from one sixty to two eleven, it's a bit of an, an increase because there were some salary adjustments to the manager, I believe, and his, and her support. And she's also looking to bring on board a part timer. City attorney. We are outsourcing this service, I believe. We're no longer having a city attorney in house, so the budget for this department will be zero. And it was reallocated to admin for ninety thousand for both the city attorney and the prosecutor. Contract labor, yes. Facilities maintenance, not too much of an increase. It's going from two twelve to two eighteen, mostly due to the, the cola. And a little bit of an increase, I believe, in contract labor, no, it stayed the same. And utilities, yes, thank you. Let's keep going, non departamental expenses, this is a contingency set aside for mayor and council projects, that half a million. This right here, the grant funds included with the general fund revenue is going to be your ARPA, the remaining balance of ARPA that we currently have is this four point seven million dollars over at the top. Then we anticipate on getting another grant for Somerton Avenue, the traffic signal project. The seven hundred thousand dollars is going to be for the design of the project.
And Rosa, if I may, mayor council, that is the downtown redevelopment for the federal funding allocation that we're hoping, and there is a match. So that would be used in support of that and getting the project started, if it does come in this next fiscal year.
Now we factored in all the different projects below, the ninety thousand dollars is for the court security system that was approved using ARPA. As you can see, finance no longer has their ARPA, because we're not doing the RP system. The police department bay garage is another project, that two million dollars is for the water tank number three. Moving on to the next item, this is our Parkview project. We anticipate on getting three point three million dollars for the property sales next year. And then the expense is going to be a little bit more at four point four million, only because we had received the the revenue deficit listed below in this year when we sold those lots, the first couple of lots, I believe it was lot one, two, and seven. When we sold the Fourth Avenue Gym, the Sunset Clinic, and Fortunas.
Fontanas.
Fontanas, yes, thank you. The capital improvement fund is next. Here we have a majority of projects that we're doing. Some of the projects that are going to be happening are the, the Parks and Rec soccer field. The Pericone pathway project. The, keep scrolling, please. Keep going. Overall, this fund is going to decrease its expenditures, we're going from two point eight in prior year to one point two million dollars. The next fund is the HERF, the Highway Users Revenue Fund, which is restricted specifically for road projects, roadwork. Sam's got quite a few projects going on in this fund. One point seven in prior year was our revenue and we're budgeting for a decrease in revenue this fiscal year in HERF. Andrea keeps scrolling for me, please. Overall, there's going to be an increase in expenditures that we're trying to find additional budget capacity, it'll have to come out of general fund to cover that, those, that additional spend that we're not able to afford with the HERF funds. Alrighty, next is the miscellaneous projects fund, we're getting a grant from DEMA for fire, for police, I believe.
Resource office.
For two hundred seventy thousand, this will be used to buy some tasers. Then we anticipate this prop two oh five sales tax, I'm still working on researching this item to see how much approximately it'll be. I just put the one oh five there for now. We're anticipating an increase in revenue in this fund. Keep scrolling to my expenditures, please. And then we're only spending four sixty three hundred, so we'll have a surplus of revenue in this fund. Keep scrolling for me, please. Public safety special projects, there's a majority of grant funds that are being received in here from the Arizona governor's office. We're going to see an increase in, in revenue, I believe. And this as well includes some funding that we are going to receive for fire. Keep scrolling to the expenditures, please. The revenue is going to be higher than the expenditures, so we should be okay on that fund. Now, this is our donations fund, so we're only saying we're going to receive twenty thousand dollars for the cocoa pot donations, it's going to be we're thinking about approximately five thousand less than what we got this year. And so we're only going to budget to spend that twenty thousand. The court enhancement fund, this is a restricted revenue that courts has. It doesn't have much money, they don't have very much money in their savings account, so typically they budget for a very small amount, we're only budgeting for fifteen thousand dollars in revenue, and Andrea keeps scrolling for me, please. And fifteen thousand dollars in expenditures. Next is the senior center. The senior center, we are anticipating four hundred thirty one thousand two hundred in revenue for this year, and the senior center expenditures. We are anticipating to only spend two forty two, which is puts us in a surplus with the revenue for the senior center. The IDA is our next department. And we managed to come up with a balanced budget for the IDA where we're spending a hundred seventy three to two hundred in both revenues, and we're receiving a hundred seventy three, two hundred in revenues, and the same amount in expenditures. Next is our development fees. We're only going to receive, we only anticipate receiving a hundred thousand, which is significant drop from prior year. Is that a significant drop, scroll up for me, please? My apologies, it's actually an increase, so it's an increase of thirty thousand from prior year. I believe, no, I'm looking at it wrong, no, it's the same amount, okay. It's just the expenditures are going to increase from prior year. And we kind of balanced that one. Keep scrolling for me. The public safety revenue and expenditure fund, we attempted to balance these specific development fee funds so that they wouldn't be over the revenue, we're anticipating this revenue source to increase by fifty thousand. Transportation revenue, we're anticipating an increase of fifty thousand. Keep scrolling. Is that the waterfront, right, okay, now we're good, I know, waterfront. Alright, so the waterfront, we're anticipating on receiving a lot more revenue. Over a million dollars of extra revenue this year. For the, on the expenditure side, we planned on spending around four point two, which was around the same amount of revenue that we were receiving. I believe this fund is in a little bit of a deficit, but not so much. Sewer expen- sewer enterprise fund. We're anticipating an increase in revenue in this fund, it's going to go from three point two to five point five. And we're going to spend significantly less than we did, than we are receiving in revenue for our sanitation enterprise fund. Our revenue is going to decrease, we're anticipating a drop in revenues in this fund, and for expenditures. Keep scrolling, please. We are anticipating an increase in expenditures for our water grants revenue, we're anticipating an award for seven, three hundred seventy six thousand that we're going to use towards a, a construction project and water. Waste water grants. We're anticipating a four hundred sixty thousand dollar grant award for debt service fund, keep scrolling, this is the debt for the entire city, what we're going to have to pay out. Keep scrolling for me for the expenditures, we're going to spend approximately one point seven million dollars. We're going to allocate that towards debt. Cars with the loans, the solar panels, city Cars with the loans, the solar panels, City Hall refunding. Somerton three point two streets project. Alright, the assessment districts. We included the expenditures for the zero scape plan and we anticipate on. I believe putting in some lighting, Louis. So we're gonna. Drop in revenues just a tad bit. From two eighty four to two thirty seven. Scroll down to expenditures, please. We have a contract for five years with Venezuela's landscaping company. So we're kind of at a set price for for these services. We do not have enough revenue to offset the expenditures here. As you can see, the expenditures are at four seventy four in the assessment districts. Then moving out to the development fee sewer fund. It's a hundred fifty thousand for revenue that this is our water sewer impact fees or utility fees. Keep scrolling for me. Then we have sixty thousand budget for expenditures. One thing I'd like to point out is that we're going to have an increase in the water rates around the city, but we're not increasing in our wastewater rates or sanitation rates to offset some of this debt. Development fee water fund. On this one, we're going to decrease in revenue. And we chose to decrease the expenditures. The Court Trust Fund is another restricted revenue source that the court gets from different fees. They're only budgeting to spend six thousand five hundred, I believe, out of this account. Keep scrolling for me. Yes. Alrighty, and that's the end of our budget for this year. As I mentioned, we are currently in a deficit. Any questions?
Mayor Council, if I may. I know there's a lot of information and and actually we've been, it's been very current for us also. You know, like like Rosa said, there is a deficit. And so we're working on that to balance it. But but tonight, you know, I we'd like to hear from Mayor Council. You know, just some of your priorities or 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 at least, you know, what what would be important for you to make sure that we know as we look at as administration and finance look at where to balance the budget. We get direction from you of what you'd like to see in the budget, stay in the budget. And that way we can focus on decreasing in other areas.
So we do have also some costly CIPs this year. This is the most costly year for our CIPs. We're doing a bulk of them this year and it should slow down unless we plan some more over the next couple of years. It should just be maintenance. We had a lot of maintenance items come up this year. One example would be, I think, the odor control switch over at the water plant. Items like that that are like twenty years old that need to be replaced.
Will those order control be out of the enterprise fund?
Yes.
Yeah, my my, at least for me, my concern is not really the enterprise funds, those ones that are funded. The ones that we need to look at is the general fund. And of course, my priority for those positions, the if the general fund are the ones that we are having a lot of attrition. With and we we need to take care of those departments. And so at least for me, I would like to see that. And of course, if we can give a call, you know, however it may look for our employees, but prioritize those departments that we've been losing. Employees to other agencies. I think that's especially public safety that that's very important. And. Other than that, if at least for me, that that would be my priority because I know, like you said, we are, we're at a deficit. And. And for administration to prioritize. They know there's FTS from each department, but that that's something that that needs to be worked out. I, you know, I I wouldn't want to get too involved in the operations, but at least the. So that's something to be determined between city manager and departments, but at least for me. Just seeing the overall impact to our community is losing a lot of our public safety and and we've had that for years. And I know the other agencies are increasing those those salaries. So it's the priority across the state. So we can at least try to keep up to me that that will be. And of course, what we've had, we have that development on the. On on the west side that we that we have commitments to that we pretty much have to have to do it. So at least as far as CIPs, if we can take care of that area where we have committed to the high school, to the parkway. And. And we can push other either FTS or projects for the next fiscal years. And so be it. But yeah, that's at least that that will be my. My preference.
You know what I mean? I I. I think for me, just hearing you say right now that we're at a deficit, you know, it kind of, you know, gives me chills. But I think for me, would it be kind of. You know, find a, you know, balance the books, balance, find a balanced budget, you know. See, you know, again, this is something that our city manager needs to do with like, like Mary said, with with department heads. You know, what's a need versus a want? You know. It for me, that's it's a, it's finding that balance, that budget, you know, because I think for future, I mean, we want to put ourselves in a. In the most flexible position that we possibly can. And when we don't have that financial flexibility, I mean, we were really tied up and they're very limited things that we can do. You know, so I I mean, I guess this is where the hard conversations need to happen within directors and 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 staff and and with the with the city manager. And and that would be for me, just finding that balanced budget. You know, operating on the red. I mean, it's just, it's 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 not a best practice. You know, we want to improve the quality of life for our residents that we do have some things going on on the, you know, on 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 the on the west side. So I think some of those, you know, are, we we, I we must continue moving forward with that. But it's really, I think, is really going to come down to staff and directors and and with their city manager, having those hard conversations and. And making it work. But that would be for me, Mayor, just finding that balanced budget. I I mean, not. I would, I'm not a fan of operating from a deficit standpoint, you know, and.
To be sustainable.
Needs to be sustainable and but at the same time, give us that flexibility for the future. You know, so I mean, there's a lot of factors, you know, that 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 need to be taken into consideration. You know. So I mean, that that would be me, that would be my main priority, I I guess, just balancing that that budget and. You know, and I know with the water rates, I know you might, you mentioned right now that we're going to have an increase and. You know, so if I remember correctly, we should be. On the positive on that, or at least break even, I think by year twenty twenty five, if I'm not mistaken.
And and Mayor, if I may. You know, Councilman Castillo, you know, enterprise fund, we worked out is healthy. I mean, I I think we can, you know, I'm looking at Russell just to make sure we confirm. It's been the general fund and and again, it's been the commitment to Parkview, the high school. But again, those, you'll see the benefits coming. You know, I I think that, you know, the plan is there, a lot of unfortunately, increasing costs thirty percent. Here and there, you know, added up to, you know, more amounts. But I I mean, staff wise, at least on the economic community, community development side, feel that that it that's a great investment. I think that's that that's something that you're that the city of Somerton will benefit from. And we definitely know that. And and so it's a, it's a waiting part of it as as those, you know, revenues and and and. And the positives come from that. But the upfront is 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 a little bit challenging right now. I I've sat with the department directors today and and we had the discussion and so as a team, we're looking at that. And now and as a team, we 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 want to work with the council to to get a balanced budget and and keep moving forward. So that is our goal. And and I think all the department directors share the same feelings that, you know. Sometimes the revenue is in there and and we were, I think, the department directors and and administration are ready to to make those decisions. So we can provide you a balanced budget. But but we also want to know what what you'd like to be in there so that we can try our best to make sure that that's happening. Another thing I want to point out is that you're going to see a lot of things happening this next fiscal year. You know, we talk about deficits and and so forth, but that's in the general fund. There is a lot of projects and you're going to see the changes in Somerton. So so I just want to reassure you that that it's not going to be, oh, you know, we didn't do anything and it just stops. No, there's a lot of projects. You're going to get a new park. You're going to get more streets. With the water, with the CDBG. You know, possibly a new van with the senior center. I mean, there's, there's going to be, you're going to see a lot. Because of the the funding and some of the things that all the department directors are working on. So you'll see that. But yes, we understand the challenge of of what's coming. But we we think that if we can get through this year, we have great things coming that we'll be able to come to you and say, hey, what's a wish list? We're 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 doing really good and and we want to do more for the community. So.
We're going to be in a great position in the future. I totally agree with Louis. We're going to see an increase in property taxes because we're putting up all these new developments. Also, and sale, city sales tax, because that's going to attract some new people to come to Somerton. Eventually, if Somerton becomes a very good attractive place for the residents, because we're working on improving the quality of life. We should see all these revenues significantly increase over the next couple of years. It's just a rough start because when developing an item, there's just a lot of money that goes into these projects. Especially during this time of year. Most cities are facing these these challenges because we're unable to keep up with the current cost of living, the inflation, which is almost at eight percent. And this is happening around the country. It's not just Somerton. So we're going to continue to see these staffing issues. But the number one priority, I would think, is to be able to deliver these essential services to the residents. And to keep the staff, staff turnover under control because that does become costly. And one way to do that, if we're not going to do increases, would possibly be an alternative work schedule. Where maybe we can have rotating shifts in different departments to make sure all days of the week are covered. And that would provide the employees flexibility and attract more people to want to work for the city of Somerton. And it would make us more competitive to the other markets surrounding us. And they'd get different savings like in fuel. And we can also get some savings. We won't have to provide them certain spaces to work in our computers. A lot of times they'll use their equipment at home. Just some things that are out there, some thoughts.
And and Mayor Council, you know, this will, these will be things as we move into and and look at balancing this budget. Is presenting these in work sessions to council and in getting your feedback. But I, you know, we're, we're, I think, all of us as department directors are excited for the future of Somerton and the potential. And so we really feel that if we can get through this one year and balance it, there's a lot good coming. So.
I I just have a comment. Louis, at the start of this, you mentioned that you you guys are still working on it basically today, and that's why we didn't get a copy of it beforehand. So is it safe to say that this budget is currently in a deficit, even though you're still working on it?
Councilwoman Delgado, we're able to make changes, push projects into the future, invoice some vendors early. I mean, Public Works has some costly projects going on. If we can get some of these invoices out, it'll make a huge difference in our expenditures. They'll actually go down for next year.
But to answer your question, yes, we are in a deficit. But there is options that we're looking at to to spread. The the revenue is just not there. For for the for the items that we're looking at. And and like Rosa said, there's some things that were were options that we're looking at because we have budget capacity this year. To be able to maybe. Do that because of of the changes and 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 some some projects that didn't get done in other other areas. That we we might be able to lower that and some of those that that we might be able to push over. But again, we're hoping that on next week. That we bring you a proposed budget, a balanced budget. A lot tighter than this, of course. But again, tonight, I think for us is we just want to hear from you. You know, just what you'd like to, you know, what your priorities are because we, you know, department directors want to make sure that. That, you know, we share that vision with you and 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 what you'd like to see so we can focus on that. And as a team, we're ready to do that.
Councilman Gonzalez. Any other questions or comments?
Sorry. Despite despite all the challenges that we're currently facing, it's going to be a successful year. I'm sure everything will fall into place. And we'll see the rate of return soon or maybe later in the future. And I hope to be able to deliver, continue to deliver the essential services to the residents. To me, that's priority. And meet their expectations, of course. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know it's, you know, this gave me a headache just seeing this. And I know you've been seeing it since you got here. You know, want to thank all of you for for your hard work. A lot of you are new and I know there's been a lot of changes and just to try to figure this out. So it's a puzzle and and still not, not not ready. And I think we understand. And thank you. With that said, it's seven forty nine minutes adjourned. If you can send us email, emails, this, I know we're going to, it's going to change, but at least we can see it.